We're in a meeting of the Brookline Select Board for February 17th, 2021, time is 6:30 PM. First up is review changes to the agenda, if any. I don't, I don't have any changes to the agenda, other than to say, I guess, depending on how quickly we might go through things, we might need to push back the building update until Bruce gets here, but, but no changes as such. Gwen, do you have any changes you wanted to make to the agenda?
No.
Joseph, any changes you wanted to make to the agenda?
No.
Shelby, any changes to the agenda?
I think I'm good.
Okay. All right. Then first up is scheduled members of the public. David Parker has joined us. I should note that all of us are remote. I'm physically in the town office, but I'm the only one here. Shelby, Joseph, Guy and Gwen are all remote, as are David Parker, Peter Barris and the folks at Factory B. There are no unscheduled members of the public, either physically here with me or online. So that brings us to approving the minutes from February 3rd. I will say for my part, the only thing I noticed here was Shelby is listed as having been there, but she wasn't there, so we should remove her. Just when you've gotten in the habit of not-
Sorry, Peter.
Oh, maybe Shelby. I know.
You guys just missed me so much. You wanted to slip me in there.
Exactly. So if you can remove her, and then the only other thing, I think on the entire thing that I noticed was just down under the treasure update, Judy Acampora's name is actually A-C-A-M-P-O-R-A. Everything's right about it, except it's A-C instead of A-K. If you can just change all of those. And that is all the changes that I had on them. Gwen, did you have other changes to the minute?
No.
Joseph, any other changes to the minutes, other than what I noted?
No.
Shelby, I know you weren't there, but was there anything you saw that you thought was, should be changed? Okay. Okay. Then I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from February 3rd as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
One second.
Second by Joseph. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from February 3rd as amended signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So it's approved with one abstention. All right. And that brings us swiftly along to the first item of old business and the informational hearing prep, which sounds like some kind of medical procedure that we're going in for. And it might feel like a medical procedure by the time we're done with it, but not because of our moderator. It was, I hadn't planned that as your intro, but I kind of like it. So I think we'll go with it. So we asked David to join us to just sort of make sure we're all on the page, on the same page about how we'll run this thing. Because as we've mentioned before, it is technically a meeting of the Select Board, but you know, in order to make it feel as much like town meeting, and also because he's very skilled at keeping us on topic and moving through our articles. It makes sense to have David act as the moderator for it, and he's graciously agreed to do that. David and I had a Zoom call of our own last week when we sort of bounced around a variety of ideas. And I think maybe what I propose is for me to just sort of run through a few things that he and I discussed. And then we can open it up for other suggestions or comments on that stuff. So, you know, the obviously the meeting will follow the published agenda, which, you know, calls to order at 6:30 PM. Gives the ability to, gives the ability to have additions and deletions and changes to the agenda. But we don't anticipate, nor do we think it makes sense to make any of those changes. So I don't think any of that will actually be the case. I've put on the agenda something called Remote Meeting Rules of Procedure. And basically what I will likely do is just sort of run through for people who've joined the call, what the sort of operating rules are going to be, which are going to be, everybody's going to remain muted until they are recognized by myself or the moderator, more likely the moderator, and asked to unmute themselves to make whatever comment they may wish to make. I should add, that's going to apply for all of us as well, all the Select Board and everyone is on it. Everyone will be muted unless you're recognized and given the opportunity to speak. So for the case of board stuff, our assumption going into this is probably if people have questions, David will probably first refer the question to me. If I am comfortable answering the question on our behalf, or, or saying, we don't have an answer to that, whatever it may be, I'll do that. If I want, if I think it makes sense for someone else to speak to it, I will recognize Guy and ask Guy to speak to it, or Gwen, or Bruce, or whoever else. So we'll, we'll lay out for people when they get on the, on the call, that, you know, the muting and unmuting thing is probably going to be a big part of the discussion. Because in addition to sometimes struggling to get people to mute and unmute when they're in Zoom, we're going to have a bunch of people, probably, I'm guessing, a bunch of people who are going to be on this only using their phone. So they're going to have to be able to unmute themselves using star six rather than clicking a button. And that might take a bit of reminding and whatever, but we'll just, we'll work through that. You know, so the main talking points as far as rules are going to be, you know, your, if, if you want to be recognized to speak on a subject, on an article. So we'll, we'll go through each of the articles, and each of the articles, as you see on the agenda, has an opportunity for public comment at the end of the reading of the article. We're going to ask people to use the Zoom functionality of raising their hand, which for any of you who are on the Zoom call itself, you'll see somewhere, probably down at the bottom of your screen, a reactions list, where one of those reactions is to raise your hand. So we're going to ask people to do that in order to be recognized, because that will do a few things. A, it'll help David and myself know who wants to be recognized. It will also put people in the order in which they raised their hands. And we'll basically just give each of the people who raised their hands, who want to talk about Article 1, or whatever article we're on, will recognize them, either unmute them, or get them to unmute themselves, ask them to speak to their question or comment, whatever it is. One of the points we'll be asking people to speak, be succinct and be as brief as possible. And that when push comes to shove, we will enforce our rules of limiting people to two minutes. If there's anything that goes, that seems like it's going to go beyond that, hopefully that won't be the case. And then once people have asked their question, we'll ask them to mute themselves again. And then we'll either respond to that, if it warrants response, if it's a question rather. If they're just making a comment, then, you know, we'll thank them for their comments and we'll move on. And then we'll do the same thing for the next article, and the next article, and the next article. Obviously, most, I think it's reasonable to assume the vast majority of the articles, which are appropriations, are probably not going to have a lot of, if any, people who want to ask questions or make comments on them. I don't know. We'll see. Depends on who shows up. You know, we may do this thing, and it may not be much beyond us. It's hard to know. So generally speaking, I don't think that there's a whole lot that we'll have as far as complications of questions. One of the points that I will make at the beginning, I suppose, is just to remind people who are joining it that it's an informational hearing. It's an opportunity to, for people to hear the articles and ask questions or make comments, but nothing can be amended. It's not like a town meeting. There's no facility for amending any of the articles. They are what they are. I think everybody should understand that at this point, but we'll remind people in case. That's about it on the sort of rules, strictly speaking. Oh, another one of the rules that I will note for people is just reminding people not to, though the chat function will be enabled for the meeting, it's only to be used in the event that somebody can't figure out how to unmute themselves, or they're having some kind of technical issue and they're wanting assistance. It should not be used for people asking questions, or making comments, or anything like that. Because it absolutely goes counter to the open meeting law, because obviously it would only be visible to some people, and not everyone who would be part of the meeting. So we don't want people using the chat for anything beyond a request for technical assistance, essentially. I think that's it, as far as the sort of rules are concerned. So we'll, you know, I will hopefully more succinctly and quickly lay those out. Then we'll basically go through each of the articles. David will read them. Like I say, we'll solicit people who have questions or comments. We'll go based on people who have raised their hands. I will be doing my best to try to identify people, particularly people who've called in on the phone, to try to put names to them in the participant list, so we have some kind of idea of who people are. I don't know how easy that's going to be to do. Speaking of which, Mark, did you join the call?
Yes, I just joined in. Thank you.
Okay, cool. Your number I actually recognize. So I think that that's the main thing as far as, like I said, the rules. And the process will be going article by article. You know, like I've said, most of them, I don't necessarily expect us to get questions. And even if there are questions, I'm not sure there's much. As far as the appropriations are concerned, you know, they're appropriations requests. I don't intend, and I don't think any of us intend to speak to the veracity of any of these organizations, or what the money may go towards. I don't think that's really our place to determine that. David, can you think of other things that I missed that we talked about?
No. No, you, you're very, you're very good about encapsulating what, what we talked about last week. Yeah, on the appropriations, I, I wouldn't be surprised if there were some people who had a general question, like, why is this organization on the ballot, kind of a thing? Or what does this organization do? Do you know how many Brookline residents participate in this program or benefit from it? And I don't know how, how you want to deal with those. Often, at the actual town meeting, we usually somebody raises a hand, says, well, I know, you know, this about the organization, or one of you may, may have some inside knowledge as to why this particular organization is appealing to the town for funds. So I, I don't, I don't know. How, well, as, as you said, my go-to, when somebody comes on with a question, I can ask them to state the question or the comment. And then basically, I would turn it over to you, David, for you to dispense to, whether it's Shelby, or Joseph, or Guy, or, or whoever, you know, for an answer, but I, I don't know how you want to deal with, with, I know you don't want to speak in support of any of these organizations, or against any of them. But is there, is there any sort of listing as to who they are, or what they do, some of them? I haven't looked closely at-
Well, I mean, I guess what we do have, and I mean, I, you know, I can certainly have this at my disposal. I mean, we do have, if I can track it down, which I assume I can, we do have the letters from each of these organizations that lodged requests.
So if you needed that.
Typically, those letters say, you know, some amount of information about what they do. And often they make comments about how they impact Brookline residents specifically. They don't always, but they, but many of them do. So I think that's, that's a good point. I mean, I don't have a problem having all of those available to, you know, quickly refer to and read some bullet points from if, if people have questions about them.
Some, some are, most are very obvious, I think, but every once in a while, something comes up. And, you know, usually there's somebody that, that speaks to it in some way, shape. And, and I just, I think this year, now that they're separated, which you and I discussed again, which I think was probably the way you, you had to do it in this particular year. Being separate like this, questions, you may get more questions about this than, than normal.
True. Yeah, that's, that's, that's a very good point. Okay, let's just, let's just go around, and I want to give everybody an opportunity to sort of either feedback on what I rattled off, or the discussion we've had, or have other things. Gwen and Guy will do you guys together, since you're in the same room. Does that, anything jar you and make you think is off about that process? Or anything we didn't lay out that you think we maybe need to be prepared for?
Uh, no, I think you've done a good job in explaining the parameters. You know, this is all new territory for us. And in regard to David's concern about people questioning the appropriations, for the most part, through the years, we've always lumped all the appropriations together, and they were organizations that have served Brookline very well. The only concern I have is that, you know, that people have to realize that we have two or three new appropriation requests. And I think those are the ones that we should probably want to be able to answer questions in regards to.
Yeah, that's a good, that's, that's a good point. And those are ones we can actually also, I suppose, initially even before comments or questions flag after David is, I can, I can certainly flag those when we get to them to note that those are new appropriations, which haven't previously been ones that the, the town has approved. So it's, so people understand that, as well as whatever questions people, I mean, that's basically Articles 24, 25 and 26. Basically, are the three completely new ones. Gwen, any questions or things from you about this that you think are still open? Gwen? You're muted right now, Gwen, for instance. Although I will point out that I could unmute. Yeah, sorry.
What's up?
Still not hearing you, Gwen. This is a good preview for next Wednesday. Here's what I'm going to do, just because I, and I'm going to make, I'm going to do, I'm going to have an explanation of this afterwards, that Gwen, okay, you are now unmuted.
I tried to unmute it, and the button didn't work. But no, I have no further comments. I'm fine with that.
So one thing I'm going to note about the muting and unmuting, and I, I had a little conversation with Peter about this before other people joined.
That is absolutely correct.
You may have- Okay, now I'm going to ask you though to mute.
I'm going to try.
Don't really have a say. They can't do anything.
It's not working.
Okay, I'm just going to mute you from here. So one thing I'll note is that people who are logged in actually through Zoom, either on a computer, or a phone, or a tablet, or whatever, the meeting is set up like this one was. And people may or may not have noticed it, when you joined the meeting, you gave the organizer, the host, the ability to, the right to unmute you. Unfortunately, or unfortunately, because of privacy rights, you, Zoom does not automatically give the host of the meeting the ability to unmute someone else. That, that right has to be waived by the attendee when they join the meeting. Unfortunately, further unfortunately, people who dial in on a phone, like Mark, for instance, there's no mechanism for Mark to waive his privacy rights and give me as the organizer, as the host, the ability to unmute him. So I can mute Mark, but I can't unmute Mark. So if Mark needs to be unmuted, I'm going to need to remind him possibly that he has to hit star six in order to unmute himself. However, people who are actually in the app, I can mute and unmute them probably, which I may end up doing, because it may be a lot easier than trying to explain to some people how to unmute themselves, or mute themselves. But anyway. Joseph, how, do you, does the process such as it is, that I've randomly described, and rules and stuff, does that make sense to you? Is that anything jump out at you as a bad idea, or missing about all of that?
No, the process makes sense. I have, I have two things. One, I, I think that we, and I'm sure you already, both Davids have this planned, that I think that this is probably going to be brutal, and we should just really try to reiterate that people need to to be on top of their game and be respectful with the muting and unmuting. But I'm sure you already had that planned. The other thing is a question, and maybe you already covered this, and I missed it, and the whole muting and unmuting and all that. But how, what's the mechanism for the people calling on the phone to raise their hand?
It's star nine.
Okay.
Which I will explain, which I will explain to people during the, sort of explaining to people that they need to, yeah. So people use star six to toggle between muting and unmuting. And star nine to raise your hand.
Okay.
And actually, Mark, if you wouldn't do me a favor, since you're dialed in, could you try that right now? Just to validate for me that it works for other people? Can you press star and nine on your phone?
Star and nine?
Yeah, star then nine. Yep. And I see your hand raised right when that happened, so.
Okay, very good.
Out of curiosity, can you, can you do star nine once more? Can you do it one more time?
Sure.
Yeah, interestingly, it doesn't lower the hand, but that's okay. I can do that.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, sure.
So yeah, Joseph, so that's the mechanism for, for those things for people on the phone. Any other, was that, was that the extent of your question about that?
Yeah, that covers everything. Well, hopefully it goes as smoothly as it can.
Yeah, exactly. Right. Shelby, what, how about you? What do you think about all of this, or think there are things where-
I mean, I think it sounds like we've got a solid enough plan to start, and I think we just, hopefully, we're all patient and well-rested when it comes to the actual meeting, because it's, there's no predicting how many people are going to come or not, and how it's going to go. So we just got to be ready to roll with it, I think.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that's a very, very good point. One, two, two things that I forgot to mention that. One is that Guy had sent around, and I, we'd probably all gotten it separately as well. There was actually a webinar, VLCT hosted a webinar this morning about facilitating electronic informational hearings. I pinged them, as I often do with these things, to say, I would really like to see this. Unfortunately, I have a full-time job, and you always schedule these things during normal working hours. So they've told me that it should be available to buy and watch after the fact on their store, on their bookstore in the coming days. So I do intend to view that, just in the event that there are things that we all haven't thought about with this, that maybe they will suggest. So that's floating out there, and maybe there might be some additional fantastic tip in that. The other thing I wanted to just kind of quickly note, since we're talking about it, is, you know, I mentioned that when people have questions, or even in, in some cases, prior to anyone making a comment or having a question, after David has read the article, he's going to throw it to me initially, if we want to make any kind of explanation, to give any background or things like that. What I will say is primarily, I see that being on the budget. My plan is to very briefly describe that, you know, that the highway fund budget was level funded from the previous year. Highlight the general places where we increased the general fund budget. And then also highlight the aspects of last year's budget that resulted in the surplus, which translates to the net reduction in taxes. Very briefly, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, unless people then have questions. But I'm at least going to lay out the primary aspects of that. Like I say, as far as the, you know, the taxes being collected on specific dates, I tend to think we shouldn't really need to explain anything more about that. Most of the appropriations that are recurring appropriations, I don't intend to proact or preemptively say anything about those. I do intend to preempt, preemptively flag Article 24, 25 and 26, that they are new appropriations, which haven't previously been voted on or approved by the town. Article 27 doesn't really involve any detail, so there won't be much about that. Article 28 on the recycling, I think I will, again, fairly briefly lay out that we've, you know, we've looked at the costs, and we've looked at where the trend has been heading for recycling costs. We think that this is a hopefully realistic number. I will also note that we have attempted to build into this number some money for potentially monitoring or dealing with the site, you know, in more of a way than we've been able to in the past. Again, I'm not going to go into a ton of detail, but I'll at least lay out that general thinking. Does that make sense to- Does that make sense to, we'll go around, Gwen, does that make sense to you? Does that, do you have any concerns about any of that as far as what I'm, what I'm thinking about, general talking points on those few?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. Okay, cool. Thank you. Joseph, does that make sense to you?
Yes.
Okay. Shelby, is that all makes sense?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Then, then I don't know that there's a whole lot more to say about this thing at the moment, unless, David, I'll give you a last chance. Do you have any last thoughts or?
No. I presuming, well, and the technology may take care of some of this, but I'm presuming that for the record, we need people to identify themselves as they ask a question or make a comment.
Oh, yeah, and I skipped over that. Sorry, that one of my things, though we may again need to remind people of this. But yes, one of my things is to point out to people, as well as the unmuting, that you should recog, you know, you should say who you are, identify yourself, and then make your comments, and then mute yourself again.
Well, I'm hoping too that people, people will view this, and it's been my experience, you know, with my work at the library and things like that recently, that during these COVID times, that people realize that we're, this is new to everybody, this format, and hopefully they'll be patient and not impatient with all of us. Everybody's trying to do the best they can under difficult conditions, and so here we go.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Okay, anybody have any last questions or anything for David before we let him go start getting his naps in before next Wednesday?
Makes sense.
I just wanted to.
Sorry, go ahead, Guy.
I just wanted to emphasize that because it's an informational meeting, I don't know if the people who are the guests at this informational meeting have to be on our checklist or not. I'm gonna give JP a shout tomorrow, but I think it could be just anybody who wants to ask questions.
You mean as far as, oh, like whether they need to be voters? Registered voters or not?
Right, that, yeah, that was my concern, that they, you know, this, like I say, this is new territory for us, and I'm not sure that an informational meeting requires that the people speaking are registered voters. They may have to be residents of Brookline, but I don't know if they have to be registered voters, and I, I'm gonna check that out.
Yeah, it's worth checking out. I am fairly certain that they do not have to be registered voters or even residents. Again, because it is a open meeting of the Brookline Select Board, you know, we don't require people who are coming or who want to make comments on things necessarily to be voters or residents. I assume it would be the same thing, but yes, absolutely. That would be great if you could just sort of confirm that with them, that that, that would be great, Guy. Thank you for doing that.
Agreed.
Peter Barris has a question. Peter, would you like to unmute yourself and ask your question?
Certainly. Just wanted to clear the, the date and so forth. You're gonna want minutes for this, I presume?
Yes, yeah, if, if you're still able to attend and do the minutes for that, I think we would all.
Is that the March 3 meeting or?
No, sorry, this is the February 24th. So this is next Wednesday. A week from today.
And it's the usual time?
Yep, yep, 6:30 until. We'll see.
I believe I'm planning to be there.
I think you are. I think I, you sound like you didn't have a conflict at the time, so that's.
Nope, I'm good. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions from anybody for David? Going once, twice? Sold. All right, thanks, David, very much.
Thank you. I, I will take the opportunity to thank all of you for everything you do for the town all the time. It's appreciated, so. Anyways, see you next week, and David, if you need me beforehand, you know where to find me.
Yeah, cool. All right, thanks, you too.
Have a good meeting.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Okay, movement along to town meeting election prep 6B. I think I just put this on there mainly for a check in Guy as far as are you all set at this point for Election Day, and is there anything any of us can do to help you?
No, I'm gonna check with the teams that we've had during the last elections. I'm hoping that David, you will be there with Jen, and Gwen and I will be there, and I'm hoping Bruce will be there, and Dot Maggio, and Stan and Pat. Stan is a new member of the Board of Civil Authority as a Justice of the Peace, and I think it would be a good opportunity for him to exercise his privileges as the Justice of the Peace.
I will note that I, I'm definitely planning on being there. I am not sure if Jen can be there. I think she might have a conflict, but I will either confirm or deny that with her tomorrow and let you know either way. I'm not, I'm not sure she has thing she does on most Monday nights. I'm not sure if she has it that Monday night, though. It's not in my calendar, so I'll check on that.
Okay, and if you could get back to me as soon as possible, and then this way I could maybe pull in another member, a new member of the Board of Civil Authority, the Justice of the Peace, we have Jean Albee, and maybe I could give her a call, but I, you know, I just wanted to wait till the last, the last end of it, because people change their appointments, different things, and they have things going on. So this is the week that I'm gonna firm up the teams for the counting. Right now, we have 35 absentee ballots, and I don't know what to anticipate for the actual election itself. But let's just say we had 100. Normally, we have 60, 70 people at town meeting. So if we had 104 teams, we'd be able to handle that very easily, and I think that'll be a good thing.
Okay. Cool, that's great. Bruce, you just joined, right?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
Somebody's, somebody's meal is being shared with us, and it's a little hard to hear over it.
Did you join chewing, Bruce, by any chance?
I'm sorry? You're talking to me?
Okay, I think we're all right. Okay, so Guy, so anything then, so you're all set at the moment, all confirm or deny whether Jen can be there to count votes, but otherwise, you think you're pretty much all set? And you guys need any help staffing on the day for?
No, I believe I'm okay. I think for the daytime, Gwen and I will be able to do that. If anybody wants to step up, that's fine, but I know during the, the work week, a lot of people are working. Bruce, while I have you, will you be available to count on the evening of Monday, March 1st?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Hey, Guy, I, I will also be around if you need me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Joseph, I, I just assumed that, that you were gonna be there. I was, I was probably thinking that the whole select board would show up, but that would be great if you could be there, Joe, Joseph. That would really be meaningful, because like I said, I don't know what to anticipate in regards to the voter turnout, but it's 28 articles, and it's gonna take a little bit of time, I think. An hour, an hour and a half at the most for most people, and I think we should be able to finish it up right then and there.
Yeah, absolutely. I got, I, I, if I'm not mistaken, I won't any longer be on the select board, but I know I'm on the BCA still, so I'm happy to be there.
I think you're technically still be on the select board until the, until the election.
Till the end of the day, correct.
Very well.
You're not getting out of that easy.
Yeah, nice try, though.
Shelby, Shelby, will you be available?
Oh, I wouldn't miss it for the world. This is pandemic time. This is practically like date night. I get to go out. I get to be around people. It's exciting.
Joseph, you'd still be on the board of the Civil Authority because you're a Justice of the Peace.
So you're not out of it. No, I know, yeah. I, I'm, yeah, I know I'm on the BCA, and I, I plan on being at all the elections and everything.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, cool. Anything else then on the election, Guy? Are we good?
No, I think we're pretty well covered. Like I said, we have 35 absentee ballots, and hopefully we'll be able to get through this and this little different situation, but I think it's gonna be an interesting situation for.
Well, we're almost certainly gonna have, gonna end up with more people having voted than would normally vote at a town meeting. I mean, seems that.
Maybe.
That's the fact, that's the interesting fact, because normally, we have between 65 and 75 people show up. We already have 35 people that are gonna participate. If this proves to be a little better turnout, which, which is what we're all striving for, this would be an interesting exercise to see how it turns out.
Yeah. Okay, cool. All right, thanks for that. Right, let's move on to, let's move on to 6C and the roadside tree removal. So I put it on mostly Mark, so we could just talk about how everything went with Carr last week?
Yes, the tree removal. I think it went very well. Car Tree Service, we met promptly at the beginning of Brookline by the Green Iron Bridge, and we started right out on the beginning of Hill Road, and I don't know if anybody's noticed, but he removed those dead elm trees, and there was some locust brush or small sapling trees and some more elm that was growing around the fence line at the intersection, so I had him remove the dead trees, clean up the, the underbrush, and then cut some of the the low-hanging oak limbs that were coming around the corner from Grassy Brook Road to Hill Road, so it made a nice cleaner appearance and, and able to see traffic better as you're coming in onto Hill Road or exiting. And also, you know, I, I feel that we got our, our money's worth, definitely, you know, he has a full crew. I actually is one of, one of the traffic control on one end, and he had one of his own guys on the other side of the, of the cutting crew. And so anything in question, they all have hard hats with earmuffs with, they can speak to one another as they're working. So any questions that arose, he just either sent one of his guys over to me, or he would personally come to me in between trees and so we communicated the whole time that they were cutting. And there was some seriously hazardous trees to the roadways that he removed, and, you know, he, I feel like in some places, he went beyond his call of duty. He's like a squirrel in a tree. He, you know, in his bucket truck, he wove himself cutting his way through one tree to reach up into another tree. It's a far reaches that he could go, and then he had an extended saw cutting device where he reached up, and there was a tree, the top had broken, it was hovering over the road, that probably not too many people noticed, but he was able to remove these very high hazardous trees easily to him. But, you know, he's very professional, very safe. I, I feel like he did the town well for the, the money that we spent on him. And we worked mainly on Hill Road. We did a little bit of cutting on Harris Hill. There was a, a dead tree leaning that he was able to get. I was wondering if he would be able to get it due to the, the snowy road condition, but he managed to do everything with ease, and we also, while we were out there on the roads removing the trees that I had requested, there's also been a couple more tree companies that contract out to Green Mountain Power. So we were like doing leapfrog with them. They were working in areas where we were gonna work, and then we would bypass them and switch back and forth during the two days that we were out there. So, and even days when I'm not there, I'm, I'm working in town doing other stuff, I've noticed that we're getting a lot of pruning done on our power lines. Thanks to Green Mountain Powers, tree removal contractors.
Well, and they're also, I don't know if you know about all of the new poles that they're putting in.
Yeah, yes, I have witnessed a lot of that, and yeah, it looks like we're, we're getting quite an uplift in power and poles and, and the whole pruning thing, so that's been really great. So I feel as though we got our money's worth. We, we got, I'm, I'm gonna, I didn't go around and count the stumps before the meeting, but I feel like we've done between half and two-thirds of the trees that I had ribboned to be removed. He started in on those hemlock tree section where I wanna create the, the new drainage ditches on Hill Road, and by the end of the day, on the second day, we, we got through half of them. So that project is, is not quite half trimmed. He said he would have to come back. Now, knowing what he charges for a day's worth of trimming, I would like to talk with Archie and the board, especially Samora, just to find out where we're at with the, the road budget, and mainly the contract services to see if we can hire Mr. Carr to come back for at least one more day, possibly two, but at least one day to finish the hemlock and a couple of the other trees that I feel are quite hazardous. And, you know, I know that these hazard trees are, they're happening all the time. Trees die like everything, and you know, storm to storm, we have storm damage, which a lot of times that creates work for a tree surgeon, but, but I would like to have him come back for at least one more day if, if that works out. And I would like to, you know, specifically sit down with Samora and with Archie, because Archie's the road commissioner, just to see the projects that we have planned between now and the fiscal end of the year, being the end of June, first of July, to see where we're at and, and what's available for funding for a little bit more tree removal if, if possible.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I mean, I think if, if you have, if you have some conversations with Archie, right, because it, it may, I mean, I don't know, we may be able to absorb it in this year, but we may also wanna wait and do it after July 1st in the next. after July first in the next one. But hopefully either way, we can manage to get at least another day of that, you know, in the coming months.
Yep, I, I'm, myself, I feel like we do have the room, but I wanna make sure before I, uh, go and ask you guys for the permission to do so. So I will make arrangements with Samora to find out our budget numbers on specifics for this project and talk with Archie. And then I'll bring it to you guys to get your approval for where we can go at that point. But as far as the, uh, the tree removal, I think it went very well. I, I'm, I'm very pleased with what I saw and what we accomplished in the two days.
That's awesome. Yeah. I mean, it sounds, sounds, I mean, I know we've had good experience with Henry in the past, so I'm not surprised by any means. Um, but I think that's great. It's great that they were able to do it given the weather, the variable weather we've been having and stuff. And that they were, and that the other tree guys weren't in the way because there had been pretty much non-stop tree work going on everywhere for the last three weeks.
Right, yeah, no, this, uh, everything we did worked out well, uh, even with them in town. We, uh, we were able to jump ahead and then back up without, uh, disturbing anybody or, or giving any, you know, confusion to our tree removal guy. So it did, it worked out well.
Okay, um, let's just quickly go around. Um, Gwen, Guy, do you have any questions about the tree removal stuff or any, any, anything open from your standpoint?
Um, I, I, I think that, uh, Mark and, and Car, uh, tree surgeons have done an incredible job. And it would be unfortunate if, uh, if we couldn't utilize Carr to finish up this project for Mark. And it certainly would make our town a safer and easier place for power to be transmitted and so forth, and the safety of the town. Um, I don't see any issues with the budget at this point, but again, you might wanna just take a look at it.
Right. And I think, Mark, one thing that, one thing that would benefit from a conversation with Archie and then, uh, following up a bit with, I'll say Samara, although really most of these things are gonna need to start to segue presumably to Mike, um, who's gonna be taking over touch wood as treasurer. But one of the things that I think will, will possibly become into a little bit of question is, you know, we, with all of the storm damage that we've had and a bunch of the road work that needed to be done due to that storm damage, we're, we're almost certainly going to be well over our winter services budget.
Right.
But really because a bunch of these things are really more likely summer service, like in, in the case of this tree stuff, this is summer services work that we're not really getting done until winter services. And the reality is, I think, as long as those two numbers collectively are still okay, then we're probably fine. But ju- just sort of accounting for where all of the, because there has been quite a few unexpected costs for road maintenance over the last couple of months. So we just wanna make sure we're not, you know,
Over budget, yeah.
Too far out of whack, to the point where waiting until the next fiscal year kicks in might make more sense. Anyway, but yeah, if you can talk with Archie and, and those guys about that, that would be good.
Sure, yeah, I, I definitely, uh, I know that, uh, there's stuff that should be done, but I'm, I'm aware that our budget is tight. And, uh, I'm definitely trying not to go over, so.
Yeah.
I will, uh, I'll continue to pursue and then I, I will, uh, come and see you for further, uh, yeah.
Um, so, uh, just to continue, just to give everybody else an opportunity in case anybody has any questions. Joseph, did you have any questions or comments on the tree removal before we move on?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay. Shelby, anything more from you on this?
Nope, I'm good.
Bruce, how about you?
I'm all set.
Okay.
Uh, Dave.
Oh, yeah.
You, you forgot me. First.
Well, yeah, sorry. My, the problem is your husband took up all of that conversation and I sort of.
Anyway, so I thought the tree, I thought the tree company did really well. And the only other thing, Mark, is when you get a chance, I think there's a couple, uh, overweight permits that need to be signed.
Okay, I will check in and, uh, and take care of those.
And there's two in one envelope, I know, so.
And, uh, one last question, Mark. Uh, is the grader out of service or have you been able to, uh, get the parts for it?
Um, the, the grader is, uh, the water pump went bad on it when I was out the other day. And we have a guy that is rebuilding the water pump right now and it should be back on this week so that I can continue to, uh, use it to push back snowbanks as needed. So, yeah, everything is, um, it was a minor, uh, issue. That's the first really issue that's come across with the grader in a while. So, um, just the water pump had a leak into it. So, um, it, like I said, it's being rebuilt, which is just a new baron and a seal. And then just needs to be put back on. So we'll, we should have it, uh, back running before, uh, Friday. So, yeah, everything is good for it.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Yep, sure.
Um, okay, thanks, Mark. Um, all right, moving on to six D building update. Uh, Bruce, what's going on?
Okay, I gotta, first off, uh, Mark, tomorrow, I haven't heard from Scott Bovat yet. So kind of keep your phone open just in case you can do it in the morning, uh, like we talked about before.
Sure, yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so I haven't heard from him. He usually, he usually calls me eight to nine o'clock in the morning.
Okay, I will make it a point to, to, uh, keep checking it.
Yep, and if you don't hear from me, then he didn't call or couldn't come at that time. And then I'll do what we talked about before.
Very good.
Whereas I'll, whereas I'll witness, unless he can do it Friday and the thing hasn't blown its cork, we can, we'll do it Friday. But that remains to be seen.
Okay, yep, that sounds good.
Uh, secondly, Scott, Guy, could you give a, um, explanation to the board about that five thousand dollar round schoolhouse grant, just quickly?
Uh, just really quickly, I got a call from a, uh, a Ken Doyle, I believe, and he was concerned about the five thousand dollar grant that the Historical Society has on its books now for the last couple of years. And they're trying to clear up their book, so they just needed to speak to a contact person. And I gave him Cynthia Now's number, so hopefully that will be taken care of in the very near future. I did emphasize that if he didn't hear from, uh, Cynthia, to please give us a call back and we would direct, uh, to someone else who could maybe help along with this grant.
Okay, all set? Okay, now me. Um, everybody, we have an existing continual problem with the UV system. It's becoming apparent, and you'll see it in the AP warrants. Scott and Harry Bovat keep coming back every, the last time, a couple of times, it's three weeks. We were, uh, cleaning the units every three to four months. Um, it's starting to be, starting to be a real problem. So I decided to do some research and start getting into why we're having such a sediment issue on this UV system. So then I called Lynn Linedwell, is her name, out of Guilford, uh, to get a history of the well because they changed a well cap pressure tank and pump in twenty fourteen. So they, Hannah Line gave me some, some details about the, about, about the pump setup, the depth, et cetera, et cetera. And then I'm happy to mention to her, I told her in the conversation that we had a sediment problem. Uh, and she's gonna look into it more. And then the next afternoon, I received a call from Gary Lynn, Gary Line, excuse me, the owner, uh, of the well company. And he was actually in Dover at the time, wanted to, wanted to, uh, uh, look at the school. Uh, I said, okay. So a half an hour later, he came over. When he came over, we discussed the UV system. He installs them and noticed, and, and noticed the, uh, pressure tank, which is a fifty pound pressure tank, was waterlogged due to the bladder bursting. So it was about four hundred pounds of water in it. After that, uh, he also tested the water and found that we had above, uh, state recommendations on iron calcium, which is hard water. A lot of people in this area have it evidently. Uh, I'll explain why in a second. Uh, and he recommended installing a water softener system to the tune of twenty-eight hundred bucks. Whoa. I almost went for it, but then I could, then I said I wasn't gonna do anything until I did some more research and especially talking to, uh, consulting Nancy Burke, see what, see what she thought. She was great. She going back the next day and she and I chatted for twenty, twenty-five minutes. Uh, and we both agreed on the best approach at this point was to see if the pressure tank and changing the water filter would stop the frequency of the system cleaning. Okay? I went over there today and changed the filter, even though there were three red lights on on the left bank and one of them blinking, which means it's getting dirty again. And it's probably because dirt was in the system when we were, when, when the tank was changed Monday, the pressure tank was changed Monday. So the only way that it can be completely checked is when that's clean, the water filter's done, which I did, and the tank changed. Okay, so what happened was, you'll, you got kind of the answer to what I was just gonna tell you. Uh, so I had the tank replaced Monday because we had no choice. Uh, they would, it would have closed the building without a doubt. They would have had no water. Uh, to the next, to the next size up from fifty to sixty-five gallons, that bill's thirteen hundred bucks. Was, that, that size tank is actually a hundred and seventy-seven dollars more than, than the fifty gallon tank. Okay, then after that, as I had to figure, go along with, uh, my method forward, Scott and Harry get really sick of doing this. So I'm back to Scott again. I called Scott this afternoon. Uh, we'd already had an agreement, or it was his idea. And that's what I was talking about at the beginning, to teach Mark on how to clean the system, um, because the red lights were on and because we need to do something going forward in the future. Little adjunct to this, according to Gary Line, we shouldn't have to clean that, that system eight, ten to twelve months a year. Um, and it has to be cleaned again before we can reset to see if what I'm doing with the pressure tank and the filter is working. If not, well, we'll see where, where we are there. But if that doesn't work, then we're gonna have to put a water softener system in. Um, because, um, well, there's one other approach. There's one other approach. I'll get that in a second. But if all doesn't work, then we're gonna have to go to that water softener system, which I have all kinds of explanation about that, which you don't need to go into right now. Unless anybody has questions about it. We could switch to what's called, instead of a five micron filter, it gets, it's called a twenty-five to one micron. So it basically starts off as a twenty-five micron filter on the outside and goes to one in the center of the, um, of the filter. When I pulled that filter out today, that five micron filter, it was pretty damn dirty with, uh, with, with iron. And iron is like a, oh, light, 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 light brownish color. And it was all the way through, almost, why it hadn't been changed at, at this point, I'm not looking back. So I, and there was only a little bit left in the center of the filter, the round center of the filter that didn't have i- iron in it. So I replaced it. But if we go to twenty-five to one micron filter, that might help. Expensive filter. I don't know exactly what it costs, but it at least costs twenty-five bucks a pop. So, that's where I'm at. And if anybody's got any questions, um, I'm ready for it.
So you're trying, so at this point, you're waiting on Scott to set a time for Scott and/or Harry to show you and Mark how to clean the system?
Yes, last time we were gonna do it, Dick.
Cause it needs to be cleaned now.
Yeah, pardon me? Last time we were gonna do it. And we couldn't do it because she was, she was out of water, so Scott had to go over right away. And Mark, we couldn't get the three of us together. So I came up with the idea that if that happens again, where Scott has to come right over and Mark can't, Mark can't come after like eleven o'clock tomorrow morning. He's got a, uh, appointment and other stuff to do. I will go over, I'll, I'll, I haven't talked to Scott about this part yet, but I'll go with Scott over. He can show me how to do it. And then I can show Mark how to do it. Cause I just wanna stop this cycle and take a little bit more control over the cleaning process. And we'll save us a lot of money in the long run.
Okay, and then, right, depending on how that goes, we may need to consider other options, but.
No, no other option about it. Uh, my next, my, I can do the next option, which we'll do, is go to that twenty-five to one micron filter. Gary Line has them right in stock. I can grab one, bring it up and try and see if that helps, but then we'll have to clean the system again. But at that point in time, if we have to clean it again after this time, I'll have Mark come over, show him if he hasn't already learned. And then see how that goes. And if that one fails, then we're, we gotta put a water softener system in. Or we're gonna be playing with this thing constantly.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll see where that goes, I guess. Was that, uh, okay, thank you for all of that.
Yep, that's it.
Sorry that that thing is now, which has been really quite stable for quite a while, is starting to be hacked up more.
Well, Dave, I, I asked Gary about it and we, we really, like I said, he's installed these, so the Trojan system. We talked about it a great deal. And he said, you're, you were, oh, this was working great. We were servicing every three months. He goes, what? Three months? You should be getting almost a ye- year out of, out of the cleaning that system. So obviously this has been an ongoing problem that we, that just never has been realized. And now it's coming to surface.
Yeah.
You know, in as much as we had to do it every three weeks, uh, January eighteenth and three weeks later, I think it was, February sixth or something. So, it, it's not good. It's, the, 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 the condition of the water in the well didn't, it was dirty. Wasn't a lot of setup, but it wasn't dirty. But the problem is the iron. The iron's what makes the issue. And it really clogs up those tubes in the UV system. The, uh, the sensor doesn't read it, sends off the alarm. You're out of business. And then it close, shuts everything down.
Okay.
So I guess that, if anybody else's got a question, otherwise I'm all set.
Any other questions for Bruce, for anybody? One, once, twice, go. Okay, thanks, Bruce.
Sure enough.
Um, okay, so moving on to seven A, the, um, organizational meeting. Um, so our next select board meeting will be March third, which will be the organizational meeting after the, uh, town meeting election. So, you know, the, we won't have a whole lot on the agenda other than normal stuff because we will of course have to go through and, uh, re-adopt our policies and we'll have to go through and re-appoint all of our appointed positions. So, um, I thought it would make sense for us to just touch base and parcel out who is going to reach out to each of the appointed people to see if they're willing to be appointed again. Um, so I'm looking at page three of my fancy new town report. And, you know, a few of these positions, we don't really, we don't need to worry about, like, assistant town clerk guy will, um, do what he wants to do with that. If he wants to move on from Gwen, maybe he will. I'll leave that for them to sort out. That's not really my problem. Assistant, assistant treasurer will be handled by the treasurer, road commissioner. Um, I will reach out to Archie to make sure he is still, uh, willing to be reappointed as road commissioner. Highway supervisor, I'm not really sure why we have this down here as though it's, you know, Mark, I assume you wanna continue being road supervisor. We really want you to continue to be road supervisor.
Yes, I, I still have lots of interest in being the road town supervisor.
So we don't need to worry about that. Health officer is appointed by the state and, uh, we don't have to worry about that as are the forest fire warden and the deputy forest fire warden. And I realized after the fact that I should have made the dates for Lester and Mike Wynott. Those are actually five-year renewals. So it's not, they don't expire in twenty twenty-one. Now they expire in twenty twenty. twenty twenty five or something like that, depending on when they were appointed last year. So I should have fixed that, but I didn't. Oh, well. But in any event, we don't have to contact them about that. Surveyor of Wooden Lumber, I realize is an obsolete one that we no longer actually have to have on there. I think we determined that last year and I forgot to take it off. Tree Warden, while you're here, Mark, would you be willing to continue as our Tree Warden for another year?
Sure, I'd be willing to continue.
Okay, excellent. Wyndham Regional Commissioners, I know we have had a vacancy in that. Not to put you on the spot at the moment, Guy, but do you think you're willing to continue being one of the Commissioners?
Yeah, I will continue in that vein.
Okay. The Humane Society as our Pound Keeper, we're gonna continue to do. I can't see any reason we wouldn't or anyone else would surface that would be suitable to be the Pound Keeper other than them. Animal Control Officer Dot, presumably she will be here at that meeting, but would somebody like to reach out to her in advance to confirm whether she would be willing to continue as Animal Control Officer?
I will.
Yeah, I'll do it, whatever.
Gwen beat you to it.
That's okay. I got enough to do.
So you'll reach out to her, Gwen. Thank you for doing that. The Historical Society, one of them is on the call right now. Joseph, are you willing and interested in continuing on the Historical Society?
Yeah, I mean, we haven't really, we haven't even meted had a meeting or really done much of anything. I'm happy to to continue to sit on the Historical Society just in case something comes up that I can help with, but I'll admit that I can't make much of a commitment. And I, as of right now, I can't speak for Doug. I can reach out to Doug and I know I haven't spoken to Cynthia in a in a few months. But yeah, for myself, I'm happy to to stay on there, but I just I really can't commit too much time to it.
Sure. And that's and that's understandable. And given given the nature of how that committee has functionally worked or not worked over recent years, I don't see that as being a problem. Would you be willing to to save us a little time? Would you be willing to talk to Doug and to Cynthia about whether they're willing to be reappointed and then communicate that back to me?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you. I'd appreciate that. If you could do that, that'd be great. You know, and I'll say I'll say as a sideline, revitalizing and reinvigorating the Historical Society certainly needs to be something that is on our collective agenda moving forward, but let's we'll worry about that when we get to the point of worrying about that. Emergency Management Coordinator, I realized I should have made singular. Mike Fontaine has been the one guy since Mike Wynott dropped out of it. Bruce, I think you reached out to him last year. Would you be willing to reach out to Mike again?
Sure. Mike Wynott or Mike Fontaine?
Mike Fontaine.
Okay.
To see if he's willing to be Emergency Management Coordinator.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Rescue Inc., I can reach out to Georgia to see if she's interested in continuing. Town nine eleven Coordinator, I assume, Guy, you're interested in continuing in that role?
I will continue in that role. Yes, thank you.
Okay. SEVCA is vacant. Well, that's something we should try to see if we can spur some interest in. The Wyndham Solid Waste, I got roped into a couple of meetings. Now I feel like I'll just stick with it. So I'll do that again. The Planning Commission, the one, well, there's a vacant position, but the one position that whose term is up is Dan Dobson. I'm happy to reach out to Dan to see if he is willing to be appointed to another five year term for the Planning Commission. And then there's the Meeting House Committee, which all of those people need to be contacted. Is somebody willing to reach out to all of the Meeting House Committee members to ask them if they're interested in continuing on that committee?
Um, just a minute. It's Leanne.
It's Leanne, Harry, Mark, Dan Towler and Dot, yeah.
What was the other one? Dan? Dan Towler. I don't have Leanne Dot, whom I miss and and Carrie. I don't I could do it, but I just don't have I don't have Dan's contact information. I don't know if I.
I can send you his contact information.
Okay, I'll do those four.
Okay, thank you.
All that information Bruce should be on the website.
Okay.
That's true. Right. Yeah, actually, that's it is on the website. You're right. Sorry, I forgot about that.
Okay, I'll find it.
I'll ask one of them right now, though. Mark, are you interested in being on the Meeting House Committee still?
I do have interest. I know I haven't spent a lot of time with the board. But yes, I'm still I still have a lot of interest in, you know, whatever I can do to work with them.
Okay, and I think that's fine. That's fine. Cool. Thank you. Okay, so that's that's all of the positions that we will need to hopefully appoint on that. So thank you everybody for reaching out to different people. And then we'll go from there. Guy, I guess, just from a logistical standpoint, I can't honestly remember. Will you create the agenda and the invite for that organizational meeting? Or do you want me to do it?
I would like I think you should do the agenda because basically all I do is open a meeting and then I pass it on to whoever is elected to chairman.
Okay, all right. So I can create the agenda for it, I think. Basically, the same agenda as last year, very much.
Yep, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. And I will, one thing I'll note is that I am finally gonna I didn't do it with this meeting just because out of force of habit, but starting with that organizational meeting, I will which I did for the informational hearing for next week also, I'll be creating the Zoom meetings will be created under the Town Zoom account, not my account. So we'll segue to doing all of those under the Towns account. And I'll do that for this one as well. Okay, any questions or other thoughts about the organizational meeting before we move on from that? All right, moving on to updates, Guy, what's going on in virtual town office, virtual and physical town office?
Well, basically, it's been busy with the title searchers and the attorneys and we're in the middle of the election season with the absentee ballots and we're also licensing dogs because they're due by April first. So it's been pretty crazy and, you know, we've had some weather issues, but all in all, I think the town is doing well. We had Tax Day, which was yesterday. We had a good turnout in spite of the weather. So things are running smoothly. Thank you.
Awesome.
Excellent. Thank you for that. All right, moving on to highways and roads. Mark, what else is going on with you?
Okay, so, you know, other than I within the last couple of weeks, I spent a couple of days with with the Card Tree Service doing our trees. Been staying in contact with Archie Clark for roads. And basically, you know, we're keeping our salt and sand sheds filled up. Quite pleased with our salt vendor. They're very prompt and the service has been great this winter so far. Hopefully that it stays that way. And, you know, we keep getting these small snowstorms and they're adding up and I've spent a little time starting to push back snowbanks to make room for more storms. And eventually what we like to do in the spring is is get the snowbanks pushed back over the ditch so that the ice melts away from the road and the frost eaves are able to thaw out a little quicker. So so, you know, within the next couple of weeks, we're hoping to get back out there and start pushing those snowbanks back, depending on our weather. Basically, yeah, that's it. We the last time I was out with the grader was when we had an issue with the leaky water pump. And as I mentioned earlier, talking with Archie, we've we've got a guy that's rebuilding the the water pump. And that should be back working by the end of this week. That's about it.
Cool. All right. Thanks. Thanks very much, Mark. Anybody have any questions for Mark? I guess I should have asked that. All right. Okay, cool. Moving on to communications. Emails. Guy had forwarded that we there's the Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation is offering municipalities grants for management of household hazardous waste and hazardous waste food scraps and or mandatory recyclables. I don't, you know, unfortunately, the proposal for anything is due in a couple of weeks. I don't know that there, you know, if we were to keep our recycling bins following the vote, whether it might make sense to look into whether there was any kind of grant money that could help us with any aspect of it probably is would probably be worth looking into if we get to that point. So I'll just kind of hang on to this. Granted, the the grant is almost over anyway, but might be interesting to know if there's something we could get if that passes. Oh, I have an email to remind myself that I was able to get a an attorney, Bob Fisher, in Brattleboro to review the salt sand shed plans and the deed and paperwork. And thank you again, Guy, for tracking that stuff down and getting it to me so quickly. He reviewed it, agreed with us that there's no that it's very clear that there's no right of way concerns. He wrote the letter and as far as I'm aware, it's actually already physically been sent to the state. I have not I've I pinged I've pinged our project manager at the Regional Commission to let her know that and just confirm that there's nothing else we need to do. Haven't actually gotten a response from her, so I might need to ping her again. But as far as I'm aware, our legal review of that whole thing is basically done and was quite quick and hopefully won't cost us too much money. But so that's hopefully all moving forward to the point where we hopefully can start to think about putting things out to bid for that project before too long. Guy received and and I responded to a request from somebody from the Wyndham Hill Pinnacle Association to come give us a quick presentation about a new acquisition they're hoping to make and I think hoping that we will send a letter of support for it. I responded to the woman and let her know that we're very busy over the next couple of meetings, but that March seventeenth would likely be a meeting where we could add a quick item to the agenda for them to join. So she was very thankful to that. She'll send us some stuff in advance, but March seventeenth will have the Pinnacle Association on to quickly just give us some information about their acquisition. And last but not least, we got an email with from Megan Brunk from the Agency of Transportation about the highway grants process beginning with a whole bunch of attachments and some caveats about being unclear exactly what their process is going to be like. Historically, they've come out and worked with people on a lot of things and it's unclear exactly what they're going to be doing. But this is something at some point, Mark, we should probably just make sure you and Archie are in the loop on this. If they're not, if if V Trans doesn't reach out to us separately.
Sure.
And that's that was it for emails. Regular mail. There's a letter in here for Dot. I don't know what it is.
I don't know what it is either, but I just thought maybe you would mention it and if she heard it, she would pick it up.
Yeah.
We'll call it tomorrow and see if she can.
I guess if you're gonna yeah, if you're gonna call her to ask her about ACO, just mentioned she has something in to pick up here. I don't know what it is. I mean, it might just be, I don't know, not gonna look at it, but it could just be the pay stub from the stipend. We also got a letter from the town of Putney. I think it's the annual, yeah, the annual agreement that we have with them about the property taxes and the road maintenance that we get from their town manager every year. That they're providing road maintenance on Holland Hill and Bennett Road and we're waiving some property taxes.
Basically, it's whatever we charge them for property taxes, they charge us for road maintenance. It's kind of a wash.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, so this is just the normal thing that we execute every year. So it looks like I need to just sign it and data and we can send it back to them. Then there's also a couple of things from the Census Bureau, Guy. This is the another copy of the Boundary and Annexation Survey that they want verified.
That's that's pretty much a volunteer kind of thing. But I, as I wrote a note on there, there have been no changes to the boundary that I'm aware of. And if you want, I can just send a no change of certificate, but I think the last time you spoke, you said that the Wyndham Regional Commission had something that they wanted to add to that. I can't recall.
No, I mean, I think at some point Wyndham Regional had told had told all the towns to hold off on it if we hadn't already executed, but that was months ago. And as far as I'm aware, they never found any map anomalies in our town. So the last time I had reached out to Jeff Nugent. So the last time I had reached out to Jeff Nugent, um he told me there was no reason to that we didn't need to do anything, so presumably meaning there's nothing that needed to be changed either. And I guess we got some kind of certificate from the United States Census Bureau recognizing the Town of Brookline as an invaluable member of the 2020 Census Community Partnership and Engagement Program. We appreciate the efforts you made in making the partnership program a success and helping achieve a successful 2020 census. So that's the certificate that we got from the folks at the Census. I will leave that to Guy to frame and put in whatever prominent place you want to display that. Oh, sorry, one more thing. We got oh, I think this is something from Samara, maybe? The contact, the contact information from Mutual Aid.
Correct, but that probably shouldn't be addressed until after the election of Select Board members and so forth.
Yeah, exactly. So yeah, we'll update this stuff once we, yeah, once the election's over and we have uh everything. Okay, um that was it for the regular mail. Uh moving on to pay orders. First up is the payroll warrant. Gwen, do you have any questions on the payroll warrant?
No. No.
Joseph, do you have any questions on the payroll warrant?
No.
Shelby, do you have any questions on the payroll warrant?
Nope.
Bruce, do you have any questions on the payroll warrant?
No.
Okay, then I'd like to make a motion that we approve Payroll Warrant 2021-07 dated February 17th, 2021 in the amount of $1,548.36. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Shelby. She just barely beat you, Bruce. Um any questions or any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving Payroll Warrant 2021-07 dated February 17th, 2021 in the amount of $1,548.36, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Alright, that is approved. Uh now, moving on to the Accounts Payable Warrant. Gwen, do you have any questions on the Accounts Payable Warrant?
No.
Joseph, do you have any questions on the Accounts Payable Warrant?
No.
Shelby, do you have any questions on the Accounts Payable Warrant?
Nope.
Bruce, do you have any questions on the Accounts Payable Warrant?
No.
Okay, then I'd like to make a motion that we approve Accounts Payable Warrant 2021-08 dated February 17th, 2021 in the amount of $10,492.23. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Gwen. Uh any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving Accounts Payable Warrant 2021-08 dated February 17th, 2021 in the amount of $10,492.23, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Alright, the Accounts Payable Warrant is also approved. Uh which brings us to setting the agenda for the next meeting. Obviously, our next, next time we will get together is the informational hearing next week at 6:30. Speaking of which, before I forget, Bruce, when we're done, can you hang on for a second just so we can? I just want to recap some of the stuff we talked about for the informational hearing um before you got on.
Fine. Okay.
But then our next real meeting is uh Wednesday, March 3rd, where as we mentioned, it's the reorganizational meeting. So most of the agenda will be the standard stuff that we do every year of the appointees and also going through the policies. Uh we'll also have the usual update reports and a building update and communications and pay orders, but I don't necessarily think we should have anything else unless there's something super pressing on the agenda beyond those things. Gwen, anything else you can think of that you think we need to put on the agenda for March 3rd?
No.
Joseph, um I know this is gonna be your last meeting, but do you want to encourage us to have anything different on the agenda for March 3rd?
I'll try to think of something and I'll I'll email it over to you guys.
Okay, alright. I'm pretty much gonna ignore your emails immediately, but you could try if you want. Shelby, anything else for the agenda for March 3rd?
Nope.
Bruce, anything else for the agenda for March 3rd?
No.
Okay. Um alright, so then before I adjourn, I do want to say, um Joseph, thank you for all of your efforts and the time and all of your energy that you've put towards being on the board over the last couple of years. Sorry to see you go. But thank you for everything.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin, for uh everything you guys have done to to help me and uh it's been a learning experience and uh I'm really happy that uh that I did it.
Cool.
I'm not going anywhere. I'll see you guys, so.
Yeah, exactly. I know, yeah.
Thanks, Joseph.
Thanks, Joseph.
Alright, then I would make a motion that we adjourn. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Gwen. Uh all those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we are adjourned and we're gonna call it 8:07 PM.